Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning board of appeals. Today is November eighteenth. I will go over some of the ground rules by which this board operates. The Gardner four members out of five of the zoning board must be present to conduct a legal hearing. We actually have five. We have Bob Rice is on conference call. Applications will be normally heard in the sequence in which they appear in the public notice. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. Applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present will be heard. Those in opposition to the application will be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within one hundred eight days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must render its decision within ninety days after the closing of the public hearing. All four members of the board out of five must vote in favor of the variance or special permit that be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is available, excuse me, in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that the twenty days have elapsed after the decision has been filed and no appeals have been filed in the registry of deeds or for the county or district. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as their name and address before addressing the board. And sitting on tonight's hearings to my far left is David Antea, Mel Cornet, to my right, Richard Hanks, and myself, Ray LaFong, as chair. The meeting will be taped and videotaped. Does anyone object to this meeting, to the videotaping? No, it be no, no objections. The board also requests that all cell phones be silenced so as not to prevent any interruptions during the meeting. Okay, the first case before the board. It's a variance request, NH Signs, Four Oak Street, PID M twenty-two dash four dash fifty-seven, seeking sign requirement release. Is anyone here from NH Signs? No, we have a request that Mariola received today that they're going to request withdrawal without prejudice. So we're going to move forward on that tonight because we do have the verbal request. Unfortunately, the printers are down in City Hall right now, so we can't print it out. So do I hear motion to move forward?
I would make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of their application without prejudice.
Second. Okay, any comments or questions?
I would just like to make comment, Mr. Chairman, that the, we did receive via email, each of us, that the person wanted to withdraw without prejudice, so we're not voting on that, having seen it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? None? Are those in favor of giving the applicant the withdrawal without prejudice? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No opposition? And we'll move on to the next case. Next case is a special permit, case two oh two five dash one one dash oh one. Walnut Heritage House Trust, sixty-three Walnut Street, parcel ID R twenty-seven dash twenty-two dash twenty. Seven multifamily dwelling units, new owner. Do we have a representative, sir?
John Gerstallauer.
Please.
Sure. John Gerstallauer, Two Cutter Lane, Westford, Massachusetts, my home address.
Thank you.
Well, this is just a resubmital of a previously approved request, and we are the new owners. We've owned it now for, my partner here, myself, for less than a month, and we want to move forward with the same plans that had been approved in the past.
Okay, my question to you, sir. If you've seen the request, there are conditions that the board put on the approval last time that they were here.
Yes, and we have attached in our request that approval, and we reiterated there were nine specific items addressed that were requested. We reiterated them on a clean sheet in the very back of our request.
Okay, and I'm just going to hit the conditions to make sure.
Sure.
We're on the same page, okay? The first condition is this board approved the original special permit with relevant documents for this project, including all construction plans, plan of reference, design drawings for the replacement of the retaining wall, and contract with the retaining wall contractor shall be initialled or other enclosures by the applicant or other endorsement by the applicant, relevant contractor, and the building commissioner. The endorsement initial is solely to ensure only that all parties are working with the same current and approved document plans. That's number one. Number two, existing debris around the building and property, including overgrown brush to be cleared up and cut to improve the site. And that's really what it is. We have two. Those are the two conditions that the special permit was approved with. Were you aware of those two?
Yes.
And you're aware of complying with those two?
Yes.
Okay. So the big item though is the first one. The construction plans, any plans to make any modifications to that building, the construction, contractors' contract that you have, and any other contracts that you have with the contractor need to be signed or at least initial and dated by you, your partner, the contractor, and the building commissioner.
Okay.
You follow me? Because what has happened in the past? Contractors had a working from one set of plans, building got another set of plans, and we had a conflict. So we want to eliminate that. So once you get all your plans, your contracts, everything, please go to the building commissioner and have her initial and have you initial, and your contractor have, and he can initial ahead of time if he wants.
Yeah, we would have him sign the contract anyway.
Okay. So I'm going to ask if any of my members have any questions and they understand what's happening.
Yeah, one comment, did you, on the nine conditions on a special permit, did you modify this in any way from the original?
No, sir. It's exactly the same as, they were actually cut and paste to reiterate. That was intended to make a clean copy so you could see on a separate piece, a cut and paste of the exact statements that were made in the previously approved special permit.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure there was no modifications.
No, sir, no modifications.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are they coming back to us with the plan for us to vote on it after they're signed? No.
No, there's already a special permit in place. And since the gentleman or the partners are approving everything that's happened, that's their request at this point in time. And that's all, nothing can happen, no building permits can be issued. Anything to all that paperwork is submitted to the building commissioner. Okay?
I just wanted to be clear on that.
Are you all set on that, Bob?
Yep, no question.
Okay. And the last one.
So if anyone has any questions on this?
We didn't vote.
We didn't?
No.
I don't want to step in.
And you didn't ask for any comments?
I will. Okay, first of all, are there any city officials here? No, there are none. Any abutters to that property present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters on property who wants to speak in opposition to this application? Yes?
Well, what were the others?
Your name and address, please.
Oh, Mayor Tierney. Mayor Tierney, thirty-Soul Street. So I'm right behind this property?
No.
I'm right behind this property. So is it my understanding that they're not supposed to be doing anything until they get the building plans approved, re-signed, and this is all going back?
They should have no permits.
There should be nothing going on over there?
Well, to meaning, construction wise?
Both.
Or just cleaning, cleaning the property?
Both.
Okay.
Both, because there's all kinds of things going on back there, and there's bulldozers.
Would you like to share them with us?
Well, there's bulldozers back there moving dirt all over the place. There's construction on the building going on because I can hear it. I mean, I'm not blind, I'm not dumb. So it's right there and it's going on. And what were the other seven conditions? You said two conditions. You said cleaning up the brush and the retaining wall, and where is the retaining wall?
Long the back of the property.
So behind the building?
Yes.
So there is no retaining wall?
Well, let's put it this way, there was a retaining, partial retaining wall when I did the first, we did the first.
So the first retaining wall is supposed to be improved, fixed, redone?
They're going to redo a retaining wall.
Okay.
Let me ask the two applicants here. What are your plans for the retaining wall in the back?
It's actually remove and rebuild to a real retaining wall.
So you're going to rebuild it and fix it? Now, because back then, there was debris falling, branches, bricks, you name it.
So what are the other seven conditions?
There's only two.
Well, you said nine.
No, those are the conditions for a special permit.
Those are the conditions for a special permit.
So what would the?
Which were all answered when the permit was originally granted.
So we can't say anything about that special permit, like where are they going to park? Where are the seven units parked? That's all laid out?
The plans have all the parking laid out. We can share what we have with you.
This is the parking that we have.
So this, this is the parking? So these are legal spaces?
Yes.
Right here? So they're going to have to enlarge that driveway to make these parking places and move that all back, because that driveway is right now about this big.
That's not under consideration tonight.
Yeah, that's not.
That's not a thing?
It's not under consideration. So they know the size of the parking, and they know to make the driveway, there's no major requirements on a driveway side.
So, but they have seven units. If they're planning on seven units, shouldn't they have fourteen parking spots according to the town?
One bedroom? One bedroom is one parking space.
Well, that's not what the town told me when I wanted to improve, make a driveway in my driveway. They said I had to have two per unit, even though.
How many par, how many?
I have one one-bedroom and a four-bedroom and a two-bedroom, but they said I had to have two per unit. So how come we only now have to have one?
That's correct. We need one.
One per unit.
If you have an issue with that, you can take it up with the building commissioner.
Oh, okay. So I can, I can put in a, what would I do for that exactly?
Tell her you have an issue and go in and talk to her about it.
Oh, okay. About the parking for this?
No, this is, this is done.
So this was approved prior, and these gentlemen just purchased this property from the prior person that got this approved, so now they need to get this special permit signed to their name. So now they're the responsible party to finish this project out.
Okay, so they don't have to re-pre-approve another special permit?
Correct.
To get this done for this project?
So they, we, this board, I wasn't on it, but this board prior had already had all the public hearings to approve this based on parking, the retaining wall, and everything else. So now it's just change of ownership, so they need to get this special permit into their name, because this special permit goes to the new property owner. They need to get us to vote to accept that they are now the new owners.
And so there's no way we can, like, disagree with any of this?
No.
No? Okay.
That was, that ability happened months ago when the hearing was being held.
So if, so I would have to talk to the building inspector about parking and with the retaining?
Not on Walnut Street.
Huh?
Not on Walnut Street. You can talk to the building commissioner about your place.
Right.
But not on Walnut Street. That's already done.
Oh, all right.
That's all approved.
So this project was approved back in twenty twenty-three? So were you an abutter back then in twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Then that was your opportunity to come and speak for or against?
Well, I don't remember, I didn't see anything that said that this special permit was approved, because people came to the meeting and they didn't say that the meeting, that, they didn't say that the special project, that the special permit was approved based on the people that came out for that meeting.
Okay, but you recall there was a meeting, a hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And the approval did not happen that night.
Right.
That was an information gathering.
Right.
And there were subsequent meetings. And there was a decision meeting held further down, and that's when the conditions were verified.
Right.
And approval for the special permit.
Okay. But in the meantime, so nothing should be going on over there until they resubmit their plans, and there should be no construction?
Are you doing anything over there right now? No? Do you know who has the, was a bulldozer, you said?
Oh, yes, 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 because I have to keep going out there and checking, make sure they don't put their things on my property.
Excuse me?
The neighbor's working on the slope that is not all right to clean up. He had cleaned up the trees and a lot of debris, and he wanted access, he wanted access.
If you have a complaint, go to the building commissioner.
Okay. Can I have my paper back?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Did you want to take a picture of it or anything so you could see it?
Oh, yeah, can I do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I, can I borrow?
You can actually go to the building commissioner and ask her for a copy of the file.
Yeah, I'll look at that after, but this way I can show the other abutter that had questions, because apparently he didn't know any of this was approved. I actually, thank you.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Done? We have a motion on the table to approve.
Was there a motion made?
No.
You made a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do it again. Okay, to approve the new owners.
The new owners on?
And that they are going to comply with the original conditions and et cetera. Do I have a second? Okay? Any further questions and comments?
Is there a timeline, timeline on this special permit? Is there? There was no timeline, no doubt?
No. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, approved. Next case before the board. Patrick J. Kamisky, three eighty-one East Broadway, parcel ID W one-two dash one-eight dash four-eight, Center Automotive Vehicle Light Service, including fuel sales, oil, and fluid changes. Your attorney, Lonnie, from Winchandon?
Yes.
Yep.
Good evening.
Patrick Kamisky from fifty-eight, something like that.
Okay, floor's yours.
Thirty-three, my address is thirty-three Lincoln Avenue in Winchandon. The business name is actually Kamisky Automotive. I think the prior owner's name is what I should keep in mind. So this is a automotive repair business that was purchased by the applicant in twenty fourteen. At that time, he didn't realize that he was supposed to be getting a business permit. He recently went to get a new bank account, and they told him he needed a business permit in order to do that, which brings us here today. So he's looking for a special permit. As to the requirements for a special permit, the first one being that it has to be compatible with the neighborhood character. This is a business, like I said, that's been there for decades. It's, across the street is an electric engine repair business. Just down the street, there is a boat and watercraft repair and sales business. A little further down the street, I believe, there's a motorcycle sale and repair business. So it certainly is within harmony with the neighborhood. As to the second requirement, vehicle and pedestrian movement within the site and adjacent streets, he has a very large parking area, access and egress is very good. Like I say, this business has been there for decades. There hasn't been any accidents that he can recall in the entire time that he's owned the business or any issues regarding that. Adequate space for off-street parking. Again, he has a large parking area. He has more than enough space for all the business that he does, for customers and all those services that he's operating, and also for the delivery of goods and products that he may be required. Number four, adequate facilities and utilities for proper operation and disposal of sewage, refuse, or other waste. Again, he hasn't had any issue with that. He has all the oils and things that he uses. He actually has an oil burner that he uses, waste oil, that he uses to heat his building. He has all the proper disposal mechanisms on site. As number five, proposals not constitute a nuisance. I guess the best way to say that, again, this is a business that's been there for decades, and there's been no complaints and no issues the entire time that that business has been there. Number six, it's not substantially inconvenient or hazard to a abutters. I'm going to be repeating myself again, again, it's decades of business, there have been no issues, and I don't believe there are any abutters that have any objections. The proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. It is in harmony. It's the whole purpose of the special permit. Business that's been there for decades, it's harmony with the neighborhood. It doesn't have a significant detrimental impact on city services. Again, there's been no police activity, fire activity, anything like, such as that. There's no detrimental impact, and it's actually adding to the DAX picks and employment as well for the city. And as far as I know, it's not inconsistent with your community development or master plan. So those are the nine requirements, and I would just urge you to.
Do you have a copy of those?
I know, just thinking, I just went through everything. You didn't include that, your?
It's in my narrative that I supplied with the application.
I just went through, I didn't see.
See, see what? Exactly.
Don't you just write the nine requirements?
The nine, the nine issues were in the narrative I gave a letter when I did the application. I may not have numbered them one through nine, but all of those issues were in the
Are you referring to these?
Mr. Kamisky, you're not changing any of the business that has been done by the prior owner?
No, it's exactly the same.
Pretty much everything's the same. Is that correct?
Yes.
How long has that business been in effect? I might have to go back a few years.
Under me or?
No, originally.
Charlie Cuzinus built the garage in two thousand and five, and that's when he started
I remember, Mr. Kamisky.
The new person, two thousand and fourteen?
Yes.
Eleven years ago?
Yes.
So are you satisfied that you have a question?
I am, I was just having a hard time correlating the verbiage to write it.
Next time I'll.
Yeah, typically, we like to, you know, we have bold and pointed questions. We usually like to see the answers. I see the narrative, I understand.
Yep.
I get it.
I will do it that way. Every town's a little different.
Yeah.
We're all different.
The other reason I ask, I have, I have to write it out. I just kind of.
Speaking from the clerk.
Be much easier if I have one that says one, two, right down the line.
Next time I'll do it so you can cut and paste it.
Well, Mr. Kamisky, I just want my question that I asked. I used, and I don't know, have you been a resident of Gardner for quite a while?
Yeah, twenty-two years.
You remember Fabro Oil Company?
Yeah, well, that's where my first, like, started there, in front of Janress. I rented that garage first.
I worked at Fabros.
No way.
And I remember that property up on Wright Street.
Yep.
And going up on two A.
Yep. Yeah, the, the rest home is on that property.
Yes, that's correct.
It's closed down.
And it's got that old dilapidated pickup truck in the front yard?
Yeah, right.
With somebody sitting in the driver's seat?
Right, right.
Okay. First of all, any, there's no representatives of the city here. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Please come up. And state your name.
My name is James Davis. I'm on High Street. I'm in a butter. I've been there a year and a half. I just first want to start by saying we've had no issues with the business whatsoever at all. They're very respectful of the neighborhood, never had any, any troubles. My first question is really about the business plan, the scale of what is envisioned, whether there's going to be, you know, open all night, mini mart, lot?
Yeah, I think that's deceiving on the light duty. It says fuel sales, nothing, it's an odd, just a garage, we're closed at five, Thursday is the seventh, there are no fuel sales or anything like that. It's staying the same way it is.
And, and then you're planning to put in a fuel tank?
No fuel tank, it's staying exactly the same.
As it is now, you just need.
The way the special permit rules out, it says, you know, light service and fuel sales, but no fuel sales at all.
So I, I'm in the for column? I present myself as being for the proposal as opposed to opposed. I came up at the wrong time.
Yeah.
So.
I think.
Oh, yeah, I know that is kind of deceiving, and I tried to get to talk to everybody, but what was going on, but I missed it.
And sir, if you remember, right at the beginning, I asked if he was going to do, conduct any business different than is being done there today. And he said no. If it was a mini mart, he would be back here again. It would not be allowed under the ordinance without approval by the board.
Yeah, so I'm totally good.
Okay, so you're in favor?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
Thank you very much. Okay, members of the board, have any questions or comments? I do.
So actually, someone would have just been raised and answered, because, you know, like you said, the table, it uses says fuel dispens and stuff like that. You don't do that there?
No, just basic automotive, oil changes and brakes, that's it. We don't even do.
And you've already established you've been there since two thousand and fourteen. Prior uses the same thing that you would, you're doing the same thing that the prior owner did?
He actually had auto sales too.
And you do no sales?
I don't do auto sales.
Those are really my only questions. I just, again, most things got addressed with that gentleman, so.
Bob, did you hear all that?
I did, and I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mel, or David?
No.
Okay, do all your motion? What we're voting on is we're granting him a special permit to continue the business exactly, because the permit doesn't transfer. He has to get it, ask for a new one, but it's going to be identical to what was operating before.
So a special permit to do auto repairs? Is that, is that what we're granting you? Auto repairs?
Yes.
Whatever's under?
No light trucks, just.
Under forty.
Strictly cars?
Yeah, trucks under three-quarter ton, no.
Okay. I make a motion that we grant a special permit for a light, excuse me, for auto repair and light trucks at?
Oh, it causes light service, including fuel sales.
Right.
Which, not a gas station.
Not a gas station, no.
Oil and fluid changes, and that's it. That's forty-four.
Item forty-five, motor vehicle light service, include fuel sales, oil and fluid changes.
Yeah, he doesn't have fuel sales.
He's not doing fuel.
Huh?
He's not doing fuel.
No. The only fuel you'll have is dry gas.
Yeah, they don't use that anymore.
All right, I make a motion, we grant a special permit to three eighty-one East Broadway. Under the table, he uses item number forty-five for motor vehicle light service. He's not doing fuel sales, but oil and fluid changes.
Would you read me forty-four?
Undertaken, established, undertaken, established. Undertaken established, undertaken established mortuary of funeral homes.
Item forty-four?
No, here's my book. Here's my choice of. That's why I'm reading number forty-five. Do we have it, miss?
Well, I mean, it was denied under forty-four, but it, it states exactly what you said.
Yeah, so there's a.
Forty-five is motor vehicle light service, including fuel sales, oil, and fluid changes. Number forty-five.
Let's go with forty-five.
You're not, you're not. Make it into a funeral or mortuary, are you?
It shows forty-four on your table? Forty-five.
How old?
There we are. We need updated zoning book. May I see that again, please?
Does it have the date on there?
It does. September thirteenth of 2025. This is very recent. So I'm gonna change my motion.
Please.
Now, we grant the special permit to 381 East Broadway under the allowed uses, item forty-four, for motor vehicle light service. He's not doing fuels. Oil changes and fluid changes.
Second.
Okay, this is based on the table issued September thirteenth, July, uh, no, July thirteenth, 2025. Table uses. Thank you, sir.
Forty-four was there.
Okay. Yeah, that's the updated one. Thank you.
The table's on date.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? No opposition? Special permit granted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck on your business.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Okay, anything further before the board? The minutes have all been signed. There's no other mayor or anything like that. So, any questions?
Do we have last month's meeting, meeting minutes, October's?
Huh?
Do we have last month's meeting minutes to approve?
I thought you were trying.
They were already there. All the, all the ones that we have there.
Oh, this is October?
Well, we, we had a hearing last month, so we should have meetings.
It should be there too.
Yeah, mine's.
It should be there.
I know, because look at the date.
That was one.
You already saw it?
She never, she never issued them. At least I don't have.
Check the date on that.
September, October. This is September.
And it should be for, for, last month should be for voting, and the one before, because we're missing signatures.
Yeah, but we had a hearing in October, so we have minutes for October.
For last month.
That's not this one.
Oh, see, I didn't, the old schlep, that's what I was reading.
Yes, I agree. I signed September, but we.
It, it was there because we were missing a couple of signatures.
This should be the one. You're on that too.
This is August, brought in.
This is October.
I thought it said in there. Okay, so I'll reprint it.
Huh?
I'll reprint, um, last month.
Yeah, I mean, it's not critical that we.
Well, we only had, we have to sign. We only had the one thing last month.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's it? No further mission, mission, no further business before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Before we do, I think I'd like to say we should thank Mr. Antaya for his service as he will be leaving. You will not be attending in December?
I can if you need me.
Are you going away for the winter or going away permanently on us?
Pardon?
You're going away just for the winter or?
No, this is, I gave my resignation to the mayor.
Oh, did you really?
Yeah, six months ago. In December, it'll be six months.
So, so you intended that this would be your last hearing?
Yeah. No, to, uh, December.
December?
Yeah. So I can collect my paycheck and then give it back.
Well, speaking of, do we get paid?
If, if that's what you call it. David, we want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
It's been a pleasure.
Being here. You're always interesting, because you always had some very probing questions. And we appreciate that. That causes us to think a little bit more and look at things differently. But thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
And we wish you the best as you go forward. Okay?
Thank you.
So, all in favor? We voted. There's questions or comments?
Adjourned.
Meeting adjourned. Bob, go back.